I call to order the Bergen Community College Board of Trustees meeting dated today, Tuesday, March 1st, 2022. Maria, please read the Open Public Meetings Act statement.
Yes, Madam Chair. The notice requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act of the state of New Jersey have been satisfied by an annual notice, including the date, time, and place of this meeting, hosted in the first-floor main lobby of the Pickens Education Center of Bergen Community College, was mailed to the record in the Herald News and was filed with the Clerk of the County of Bergen, November 24th, 2021.
Thank you. Maria, please take roll call.
Yes, Madam Chair. Secretary Beretta?
Here.
Blakesley?
Here.
Trustee Delicio?
Here.
Treasurer Fletcher?
Here.
Trustee Longo?
Here.
Trustee Morales Diaz?
Here.
Trustee Paulino is absent this evening. Trustee Ranjan?
Here.
Vice Chairman Silverstein is absent this evening. Alumni trustee Yu is absent this evening. President Friedman?
Here.
And our legal counsel, Mrs. Judy Verone. Thank you.
Thank you. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. My pledge allegiance?
To the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we will now take reports. Okay. Does the secretary have a report? Trustee Beretta?
Yes. Good afternoon, everyone. So, starting with the beginning of the month, I was excited and honored to have gone to attend the ACCT conference in Washington, along with trustee Ranjan and Chairwoman Dottie Blakesley and President Friedman, and Wilton also was there with us. We were able to see the Secretary of Education and ask him questions, and I asked, and actually, in Spanish and English, to ask him to try to keep the interest on the loans, to keep deferring them for now, because people were just getting back to work and just starting to kind of get a foundation set up, you know, for themselves, and it's hard to get hit over the head with those interest payments at this point. But it was a wonderful conference. We were able to attend various breakout sessions. So, I thought it was just an excellent way to get us out there, and Bergen was recognized, which was wonderful, and I'm sure Dr. Friedman will get into that a little later. I also want to thank Louis De Bru for inviting me to attend an online forum that he had with a former student who was explaining to current students the process of applying to medical school and what that entails. And it was so honest and so spot-on and just seamless for an hour, literally. We were on that call for an hour. And it was wonderful to see so many current students just asking questions and wanting more information on how to go about applying to medical school and what that process entails. Also, I was invited and honored to attend the President's Advisory Council on Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion. That was attended by 50 to 60 people, and I just want to thank, because of that meeting, right after I had one of the professors, Professor Krieger, come to me about a student who had a personal issue with her and her family, and thanks to Dr. Reyes and her department, they were able to help that student with a really pressing issue that they had. And what I loved was that it was a coming together of just being able to all of us be there at that one time. We were able to kind of just really grab each other and say, okay, we need this. This is pressing right now. And literally, in 48 hours, it was dealt with and handled. And it was so expertly done. So, I want to thank Dr. Reyes, her department, Professor Krieger, and Dr. Friedman for having the vision to do this meeting and to have so many people there and really invested in it. Louis was there, as well as many other people from campus, and it was something beautiful to be a part of, and I look forward to being part of future meetings ahead. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Beretta. Does the treasurer have a report? Trustee Fletcher?
I will give my report during the A&amp;F portion. However, I know we are preparing to meet with the county board of estimate regarding the budget.
Thank you very much, trustee Fletcher. Does the president have a report?
I do. Thank you. Good evening, trustees, students, faculty, staff. As I said in an email earlier today, our own Kezia Bontempo has been invited by First Lady Jill Biden to represent Bergen and attend tonight's State of the Union address in Washington, D.C. Wow. I am so very proud that once again, the federal government has recognized Bergen and Kezia as exemplary, and I thank Kezia and everyone who supports our students for helping to make this possible. As I wrote this week to the entire college community, horrific images of war have once again become reality in Europe. War, no matter the circumstances, results in suffering. Collectively, we feel this pain and send a message of support to all Ukrainian families in our circle. Bergen is woven through and through in diversity, and with students, faculty, and staff deeply connected to Eastern Europe, we acutely feel this distress in our Bergen community. I'm grateful for the organizers and participants in all of this week's activities created to provide support and education regarding the conflict. Let's take a moment of silence together in memory of those who have already succumbed to the violence and send our best energy and thoughts for an end to this conflict. As we all know, the pandemic has underscored the importance of leveraging technology to serve our students. Tonight, in responding to this need, the college will take action to launch two initiatives that will bring Bergen's online learning and support services to an entirely new level. The first, made possible by a near $600,000 federal grant, will allow the college to deploy CRM Advise, a digital interface for student support services. The program will directly address challenges associated with student retention and persistence. It will provide Bergen faculty and staff with the ability to monitor students' progress, engage effectively with them, and track the outcome of the efforts. CRM Advise will empower staff to detect problems early and better understand when and why students are having issues and to resolve those issues. The best community colleges, and Bergen absolutely qualifies, use technological tools to boost retention and completion rates by identifying and solving barriers to students' program completion. The second, made possible by a grant funded through Bergen County and federal HERF dollars, will see the college develop a center for online learning to meet the changing needs of our students and provide programs in online modalities. Working closely with faculty, this center will focus on the design, development, and implementation of fully online programs, train faculty and staff, and support future offerings of online programs and courses. Together, these initiatives will transform the way Bergen operates in the digital space. Last month, 71 faculty, staff, and students from varied departments attended a gathering of the All College Forum, a new and important arm of our participatory governance mechanisms. The forum represents an important step forward for ensuring voice for all members of our community. Everyone, from custodians to vice presidents, has a seat at the forum. We have now begun to solicit for governance champions, establish a memorialized structure, incorporate students, and discuss linkages to other college initiatives. The next All College Forum will take place March 31st at 2:30. Another important item on tonight's agenda sees Bergen take a key role in four New Jersey Council of County Colleges Career Pathway Centers of Workforce Innovation. Bergen is partnering in the centers related to patient care, research and development, renewable energy, and cybersecurity. We will work with our community college partners across the state to achieve goals in these areas and launch initiatives to promote the earning of stackable industry-valued credentials. We'll create an ecosystem of employers, industry associations, labor unions, the Workforce Development Board, vocational and technical high schools and school districts, community colleges, and four-year colleges to advance these efforts. As we've discussed in our committee meetings, we are returning to an in-person commencement ceremony this year. The event will be held at MetLife Stadium. While we certainly made the best of our virtual ceremonies the last two years, nothing can compare with recognizing our graduates as they actually cross the stage. I look forward to seeing you there Thursday, May 19th, at 10:00 a.m. Also on the agenda, please join me in congratulating retired faculty members Sidney Burnback, Linda Box, Celeste Finney, and Linian Ostrander and the family of Dr. Mark Cassup as earning the rank of Professor Emeriti, the highest rank at the college. These faculty members represent the best of Bergen, and I thank the Emeritus Committee for bringing their names forward. I look forward to celebrating their careers and contributions at an event later in the spring. And I'd like to congratulate two members of our community who recently earned their doctorates. Dr. David Marks, Dean of Library Services, and Dr. Jessica Fargnoli, Public Relations Assistant, both successfully defended their dissertations in the last month. I'm proud that the college offers professional development opportunities such as tuition reimbursement that helps to make these dreams possible. I look forward to seeing how they can leverage what they've learned to enhance our operations and educational services. I'd also like to acknowledge and thank trustee Joseph Peretto for working with a small team at BCC to explore how to make full and better use of our HACU membership and partnership. HACU is the Hispanic Association of Colleges and Universities, and is a designated Hispanic-serving institution with more than 25% of our student body identifying as Latinx. Increasing our involvement with HACU makes great sense. As we close Black History Month with a banquet this Friday evening, I'd like to thank the committee for its work in honoring the contributions of Black Americans throughout the country's history. The theme of health and wellness remains ever critical as we enter, yes, year three of the COVID pandemic. With the close of Black History Month today, we open Women's History Month with a series of speakers, events, and activities. I look forward to participating and celebrating the vital role of women in American history. Finally, the next time we gather will be Community College Month in the United States. We will support ACCT in hashtagging on social media and publishing success stories on Bergen students, faculty, and staff. Thank you. Stay safe. Remember to tune in to the State of the Union address tonight. All my best wishes for peace in the world. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Friedman. Now, we'll move to committee reports. So, back to you, trustee Fletcher, for audit and finance.
So, audit and finance met on February 16th. We are prepared to move Resolutions 1 through 10. However, just to highlight, as Dr. Friedman mentioned, on our agenda, I think it's appropriate that on Mardi Gras, we memorialize graduation with a contract. It's a wonderful celebration for both days. The online learning center that Dr. Friedman mentioned, we're issuing a contract for that. And there are two requests to the county for capital funds, and we want to thank the county for their continued support of Bergen Community College.
Thank you, trustee Fletcher. To you, trustee Beretta, on Education and Student Affairs Committee?
Yes. ESA Committee met on Tuesday, February 15th, and we are prepared to move ESA 1 and ESA 2.
Thank you, trustee Beretta. Trustee Morales Diaz on personnel?
Yes, Madam Chair. Thank you. Personnel Committee met on Tuesday, February 15th, and I'd like to present this evening, P. 1 to P. 7, with the amendments that it has to each.
Thank you very much, trustee Morales Diaz. Site and Facilities, trustee Longo.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. Site and Facilities met on February 16th, and we are prepared to move SF 1.
Thank you, trustee Longo. Trustee Ranjan, Strategic Planning and Issues Report.
I'm very happy to report that the Strategic Planning Committee met yesterday, and we got started. We were given a presentation of the academic master plan, and it is work in progress. Trustee Delicio was there, and we approved the initial, the four strategic directions, and requested for more information, you know, the goals and achievable's, and how we measure, what we are aiming to measure for the academic plan, which fits in within the strategic plan overall. So, very excited to be moving in that direction. Thank you.
Thank you very much. My report as chair with the ACCT gathering was very educational. Most of our meetings were done by Zoom, but we were able to meet with Andy Kim in person. That was a very good meeting. Assemblyman Kim is very much a supporter of higher education, and specifically with community colleges. And as far as the meeting goes, all the events that we attended were great. BCC did not miss an opportunity to press Bergen Community College, thank you, Joe, and trustee Ranjan and Dr. Friedman. I think we did what we intended to do. That concludes my report. Okay. At this time, is there any unfinished business that any board member would like to raise? Okay, seeing none, are there any other board members that would like to be heard?
I just want to report on NJCCC, the New Jersey Consortium of Community Colleges.
Yes.
The $3 million to the New Jersey, you know, for workforce and economic development, the tie-ups with the NJBIA, and of which Bergen is a big piece, and they intend participating in. It's part of the ESA, but I'm speaking from NJCCC point of view. I like the focus on, you know, creating programs which are direct pathways to jobs, so structured pathways for in-demand jobs, which vary by county to county based on what industry is there. So, very excited to report that we're continuing to, you know, move in that direction. From the ACCT point of view, you've heard enough from all the members, and I'm just thrilled to say that that's such, we have such robust participation from Bergen. A couple of years back, it would be, you know, very little you'd hear, and now I hear so many members speak about it, it really makes me excited. And to hear the name of our college and our student referred to by the Education Secretary right at such a huge meeting, and to be pointed at our table, there's Bergen Community College, that's something. It's a matter of pride that we are being recognized constantly, continuously, and it's testament to the work that all of you are doing here and what, you know, the vision we've laid out for the future. So, thank you.
Terrific. I will now entertain a motion to close the unfinished business portion. Is there a motion?
I'll offer.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any objections? The unfinished business portion is now closed. New business. Is there any new business that any board member would like to raise? Are there any board members who would like to be heard on new business? Okay. I will entertain a motion to close the new business portion. Is there a motion?
I'll offer.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any objections? Okay. The new business portion of the meeting is now closed. Open to the public. We will now open the meeting to the public for their comments. Is there a motion to open to the public?
I'll offer.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. If you would like to speak, please come to the microphone and introduce yourself, name and place of residence or where you work.
Good afternoon, members of the board. Louis De Bru here from the STEM program. Thank you for your time. And as mentioned in previous meetings over the winter break, winter term, 46 of our talented students worked under the mentorship of our faculty in the 2022 STEM internship, and today our schedules finally align, and three of the nine research projects and their leaders, Alisa Costa, Bertila Bruca, and Janir Contreras, are here to tell you a little bit about what they did over the winter break and their research projects. So, Alis?
Hello. My name is Alisa Costa. I'm a major in engineering science. I'm the co-leader of ERAA with my friend Mike. He's an IT major. Our project consists of creating, our project consists of parts, the mechanical parts and the brain part. Our members are able to create skills in sensor technology, creating mechanical assembly. Over the internship, we were able to create a gearbox design, a tendon-driven design, and a flex sensor glove to operate the hand movement. The goal for the semester are to finish a tendon-driven hand and connect it to a flex sensor glove to perform manipulation tasks. Part of the team is working on research and assembly of pneumatics, while the other part of the research is working on EMG sensors, EEG sensors to connect it back to the final product. This month, we're working closely with our mentor, Dr. Bruce Benjamin, and experimented with different wiring materials methods on the tendon hand with the purpose of having a long-lasting product. Now, we'll give it to BCI. They're going to talk about the brain part of the project.
Good evening. My name is Bertila Bruca, and I am the team leader for Brain-Computer Interface. Today with me, I have Silal Hamassud, who is co-leader, and Suisek, who is the future team leader of our project. The premise of BCI is to restore lost limb function without the need of surgical procedures. The way that we do that, we have to understand the connection between the brain and the muscles. So, before we begin our experimentations, our team went through different certifications regarding human research experimentation regulations, and we were subject to an institutional review board approval, and after the approval, we were able to conduct our research experiments. The way that we do our experiments, we have our subject attached to three electrodes on the head and on the arm. We ask our subject to clench the fist, as you see the signal change on the screen, and what's happening right now is we get different electrical signals from both the brain and the muscle. We record these signals, and we have to compare them and see which ones best fit our research. Now, after this phase is done, we have to recording and collecting them, we have to compare them and see which ones best. So, teach our computer to kind of differentiate between the different brain waves and the muscle waves, and with the mentoring of both Dr. Benjamin and Dr. Deloro, we're able to attack different brain parts and also the engineering process of the wearable and portable helmet, which gives us the possibility to move robotic arm that ERA is engineering. Thank you, and I will now hand it over to Janir.
Hello. Thank you for your time. My name is Janir Contreras, an aspiring engineer, pilot, and current leader of the Electric Vehicle Conversion Project. These are my colleagues, Anna Sierra and Richard Boada. Our project revolves around the conversion of a 1998 Chevrolet pickup truck from a gas-powered to a fully electric-powered vehicle. The truck was actually given to us by the Grounds and Buildings Department. So, after the conversion is done, we plan on giving it back to the school as a means of reduce, reuse, and recycle. Thanks to the hard work of the past and current iterations of our team, as well as the guidance of our mentor, Professor Robert Roller, we actually reached a significant milestone last summer, as we were finally able to drive and test the truck. The past fall semester in a winter internship, we are working on upgrading components as well as putting, implementing new components into the truck. Although we are in the early stages of the design process, we expect that the data gathering capabilities, as well as the overall truck performance, are going to increase. Our long-term plan is that we're going to create a conversion kit in which pickup truck owners will be able to breathe new life into their old vehicles. Hopefully, as these mags comes off, the goal is to get fresher and cleaner air. We are also excited for possible collaborations with other companies such as Volvo and even BMW. Possible collaborations will include things such as technical training. So, we are looking for those kind of opportunities. Thank you.
And this is only three out of the entire group. Also, I just wanted to piggyback on the comments that Dr. Friedman made about HACU, the Hispanic Association of Colleges and Universities. So, on that note, we'll be making an information session that is going to happen next Wednesday at 10:00 a.m. It's going to be hybrid, room S-138 or WebEx. We're going to be inviting members from HACU to help us communicate to the college community how beneficial this collaboration, this partnership at HACU is, how it's not only about best practices at the academic and student services level, but also that networking and opportunities. They have a huge internship program that we hope to tackle. In fact, some of the students standing here today possibly are going to be working in some of these federal internships over the summer. So, if you're available, please, next Wednesday at 10 o'clock, hybrid. I'll be more than happy to share that information with all of you. And also, last but not least, hot write of the press. We work with one of our corporate partners, Infinity Energy, which was a connection made by one of our friends from the BCC Foundation. They opened up this brand-new fund for, it's like a mini-grant. It's only $10,000, and there was a competition. They asked, hey, we've seen what Bergen is capable of doing. Can you put something together and potentially go in the competition to get this grant? So, today I got that. Very pleasant call to let us know that we received the grant.
Very nice.
And this is mainly based on environmental justice and equity within the green energy world. Also, last but not least, which is excellent, excellent news that we received last week. Many of you are very familiar with the Jack Kent Cooke Scholarship Foundation, which is the most competitive, one of the most competitive scholarships awarded in the entire U.S. It's about $50,000 for up to three years to go to the school of your choice. Extremely competitive. We're looking about, roughly about 1,200 applicants. The list of semifinalists was announced on Thursday, and I'm very happy to announce that nine of those students are here at Bergen Community College. Out of those nine, five students are within the STEM program. Out of those five students, four of them are part of this program, Bertila being one of them. So... Another person that I was hoping that was going to be here so I can put her in the spot, Crystal Yu is also another one of the semifinalists. So, we wish them the best. They still have two more rounds to go. So, we wish them the best in the final selection, but I'm very confident that Bergen is going to walk away with a couple of those names on the final podium. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Professor De Bru, thank you so much for your work. You just bring the coolest kids to our business. Really, the projects that you're working on are fascinating. You can hear the investment, the dedication, everything. It's just truly impressive, and thank you for everything you do for the college. Trustee Beretta?
I just, I'm floored. Like, I was just telling trustee Morales Diaz, I almost used the potty word, because I was like, my God, that's just bad. You know, that was fire. That was just, everything I saw there was amazing. And it strikes me personally, I don't know, when you had the glove moving, because my mother passed away from illness where it was called progressive supranuclear palsy, where it was ALS, Parkinson's, and dementia, and she lost her body, her movement. And I remember my son used to say, I want to create something that if you think and you could probably move your thing. And I saw that, and it just took me there. So, the work that you guys are doing is just next level. My love of cars, if you need somebody to drive the truck, I'm there. You know, guys, congratulations, and you guys have, I was going to say, one hell of a leader, professor.
Yes.
Thank you.
Does anybody else want to comment on the presentation? Okay. Anybody else want to come to the podium?
Trustee Fletcher.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't.
Pass.
Apologize.
Just ignore it.
I did. I did.
Just like home.
Go ahead.
No, I'm down. Pass.
Oh, you're passing. Okay. Okay. Is there anyone else coming to the podium? All right. All right. Motion to close the public session? Second, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right. Okay. Public session is now closed. At this time, may I please have a motion to accept the February 1st, 2022 Board Meeting Minutes?
I'll offer.
Second, please.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, Maria, please take a roll call.
Yes, Madam Chair. Secretary Barretto?
Yes.
Chairperson Blakesley?
Yes.
Trustee Delicio?
Yes.
Treasurer Fletcher?
Yes.
Trustee Longo?
I'm staying. I wasn't at the last meeting.
Thank you, Trustee Longo. Trustee Morales Diaz?
Yes.
Trustee Polino is absent. Trustee Ranjan?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Silverstein and Alumni Trustee, you are absent. Thank you.
At this time, I please have a motion to accept the February 1st, 2022 Executive Session Meeting Minutes.
I'll offer.
Second, please.
Good.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Maria, please take a roll call.
Yes, Madam Chair. Secretary Barretto?
Yes.
Chairperson Blakesley?
Yes.
Trustee Delicio?
Yes.
Treasurer Fletcher?
Yes.
Trustee Longo?
I'm staying.
Thank you. Trustee Morales Diaz?
Yes.
Trustee Polino is absent. Trustee Ranjan?
Yes.
Thank you. And Vice Chairman Silverstein and Alumni Trustee, you are absent. Thank you.
Now, on to the consent agenda for approval for Tuesday, March 1st, 2022. May I please have a motion to approve the following consent agenda items? AF 1 to AF 10, ESA 1, and ESA 2, P. 1A to P. 7, SF 1. There are no resolutions for strategic planning. Is there a motion on the consent agenda?
I'll offer.
Second? Thank you. Maria, please take a roll call.
Yes, Madam Chairperson. Secretary Barretto?
Yes.
Chairperson Blakesley?
Yes.
Trustee Delicio?
Yes.
Treasurer Fletcher?
Yes.
Trustee Longo?
Accuse myself on AF 1. Yes, on everything else.
Thank you, Trustee Longo. Trustee Morales Diaz?
Yes.
Trustee Polino is absent. Trustee Ranjan?
Yes.
Thank you. Vice Chairman Silverstein, Alumni Trustee, you are absent. Thank you.
All right. Motion passes. An executive session will not be held this evening. Does anyone on the board wish to make a comment? Okay.